The Downtown Precise Plan. For a minute and a half, how would you evaluate proposals to implement the housing element components? For two minutes, how does good land use improve our city? And what is good land use? And the final question for one minute, what is the role of a planning commissioner? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So are colleagues comfortable with these sets of questions?
Thumbs up, head nods.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Hicks.
I'm comfortable with them. With five questions, do people want to have two-minute questions? Or would you, or would, I don't care either way. But if you want them to be a minute and a half, it's your call. Since we added more, if you want to cut down the time or not. I just wanted to draw attention to that.
If other colleagues have proposals, then I could. That's why I asked when people proposed the questions, what the time allocation is. I didn't see any hands, so I'm assuming that we can go forward. Sometimes applicants don't end up using the whole full time. So I, yeah, so I think they're ready. If we're ready, colleagues, are we ready? All right. So we'll work with Assistant City Clerk to have the time up. And one of our applicants has withdrawn from consideration. So the council will now interview the following two applicants for the Environmental Planning Commission. Tina Pham, Ida Rose Sylvester. And is that the order that we'll be going in for the questions? We'll just...
We can switch back and forth with who takes the question first.
Okay, great. All right. So the first question then for Tina is, what would you bring to the Environmental Planning Commission that is unique? And we'll put up the one minute. So I think you can see it, I think, right here, right? Yeah.
I'm happy to be here, humbled to be able to speak to you all about what I can bring to the EPC. I'd like to start off by giving a little introduction of myself. Tina Pham, I have lived in the city for about 10 years and lived in the Bay Area for over 20 years. And I have experience as a civil environment engineer over 15 years with 10 years working for the public sector. So I've worked for a wide range of cities, San Jose being a very large city, and also San Mateo being a more moderate-sized city. And so what I think I can bring to the EPC is experience working as staff, working with staff, and being able to bring lessons learned from other cities to here. I believe that housing and other issues is not, you know, just in a vacuum. I think that we can work collaboratively, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, and I'm happy to work with folks here.
Thank you. Okay, Ida Rose, what would you bring to the Environmental Planning Commission that is unique?
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I bring unique knowledge about land use planning that comes from several activities I've been involved in for many years. I've spent years working with the Mountain View Coalition for Sustainable Planning, evaluating projects, precise plans, zoning, the housing element, and more, in partnership with many and varied stakeholders, including city staff. I've worked with our Historical Association, where I've focused on land use, understanding how past decisions impact our current built environment, and how our current decisions will impact the future. I've also worked on environmental sustainability for a number of organizations focused on building sustainability and transportation. I bring an eight-year track record on two advisory bodies, where I've demonstrated successful collaboration with staff and colleagues, bringing consensus on even the most challenging issues. My consensus-building skills are also supported by my work as a Mountain View mediator. I'm deeply connected into my community with all the different stakeholders that are important for land use planning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we'll just start with you for the second question, Ida Rose. I'll let you take your sip of your water. All right. What are your thoughts on the city's existing plans, like the general plan and precise plans, specifically the Downtown Precise Plan? And you have two minutes.
Thank you. Our general plan is inherently limited by its long view, and ours is certainly aging. It is static, and our community is not. Of course, it's very difficult to make assumptions about what community needs will be like over a long period of time. A black swan event like the pandemic occurred, upending our commute patterns, our economic stability, and much more, and other factors may happen in the future. But our general plan provides excellent framing, including emphasis on sustainability, inclusivity, mobility, and economic vitality, and a smart focus on balanced development that speaks to the core of our values as a city. Precise plans help keep our general plan up to date, but they too go out of date, and they're limited in their geographic approach, so it may seem a little tunnel-visioned. But our current precise plans, especially the ones we're working on now, are excellent with their specificity and their robust use of stakeholder feedback in creating them. Specific to the downtown plan, we set out to create a crown jewel in our downtown. But how do we get there? We need strong zoning that supports a variety of business uses and cultural activities, supporting a growing and evolving diverse population. We need plans to support local business. We need to balance residential needs with commercial development. And we need to activate ground floors that face Castro. And we need to make downtown more transit-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And most importantly, we need to build a vibrant cityscape that includes better recreation, green space, tree canopy, art, and uses that the public likes that bring the community together. The Downtown Precise Plan today addresses much of that, but needs to be viewed in collaboration with the Economic Vitality Strategy. I also hope that we can work with our Moffett Boulevard Plan and look at the two plans together to create a more holistic picture of a long, new boulevard that will work better when thought of together.
Thank you. All right, two minutes for you. What are your thoughts on the city's existing plans, like the general plan and precise plans, specifically the Downtown Precise Plan?
I agree with a lot of what Ida had mentioned, but I have other thoughts I'd like to add. First off, general plan was a document, 2012, a lot of work went into it. I agree with a lot of the goals and the vision and the long view that it had for our city. But also, it was a plan that is now, you know, aged. I know that in the next couple of years, staff will be thinking about how to restart the heavy lift of, you know, updating the general plan, which I think is a great time to do that. Lots have changed since COVID time. I know that a lot of ways people get around the city, and, you know, their, how much they value green space and transit-oriented, you know, corridors has changed. And so I would hope that the process that would be taken up by staff, working with council and EPC, would consider, you know, changes in residence, changes in preferences in order to kind of update the plan. In terms of the precise plans, I'm in awe by how many there are in the city. I think I was looking up on the website, over two dozen of them. And so I'm amazed that, you know, staff have worked on them with council and EPC, keeps track of them, and uses them to help inform development and zoning in the future. I think that more can be done for some of them. I know that the downtown, downtown plan especially, is on the work plan of EPC and to work with council. And I think that a lot can be done for downtown. I think a lot has already been discussed. Ida mentioned some great ideas, but I support bringing in different uses for, you know, commercial downtown, and I support bringing in things that would help support families and make it a vibrant community for all of us here.
Great, thank you. All right, and we'll stick with you for the third question. How would you evaluate proposals in implementing the housing element components? And that is for one and a half minutes.
There are a few different things I would consider. First off, I would like, you know, staff, when considering proposals, to think about what's mandated by state, how do we stay in compliance, what's required. That's the first thing. Also, resident input is also very important. I'd like to know, you know, what outreach has been done, what the community feels is important, you know, what proposals are, you know, important to them to get started on with the focuses. I'd also like to think about what are staff resources. I know that council and EPC likes to, you know, talk about goals and, you know, amendments and programs. But what are we really after? How do we, you know, build and maintain vibrant communities? How can we focus staff time when considering changes in programs, you know, per the housing element? So those are things I think about in my head, being from this, you know, from the staff perspective. I know that staff can only do so much, and, you know, staff really just want to do, like, the best for the city. I feel like I have, I'm in a unique position where I could, you know, empathize with them, but also work with them to get them to provide alternatives and give good recommendations to be considered for EPC and council.
Great, thank you. Okay, Ida Rose, how would you evaluate proposals to implement the housing element components for one minute and a half?
The housing element is so important to the future of our community, but I also think that this is one of those areas where it gets very hard to predict the future. We have a state mandate that makes sense, that we've all agreed to with a housing element number. But we also know that there's incredible uncertainty, especially when we rely on Google and North Bay Shore for a good portion of the units. With that said, when I evaluate housing element issues or any other planning issues, for me, one of my most important considerations is, have we included robust public input into the planning process? And when we look at the housing element, we often are talking about zoning changes, like moving to more R3 zoning to increase density in various areas of town. Have we listened to the public? Have we understood their concerns? And have we addressed how we can mitigate against those concerns and still hit our state-mandated goals? So those are some of the thoughts that I have. I also think that we need to be, not just assuming that our one plan for the housing element will work, but that we might have to get creative and look for new ways to build housing, including potential upzoning of different areas, repurposing of buildings, repurposing of underutilized land resources that we have today. And I think the ability to stay nimble and still hit that objective that we know we want to hit is going to be really important in the next few years. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, the fourth question, how does good land use improve our city? And what is good land use? And Ida Rose, we'll stick with you for two minutes.
A Mountain View is a relatively small city, almost entirely built out, with wonderful historic resources, vibrant neighborhoods, and an incredibly engaged community, with also precious environmental resources like our Bay Shore. We have a lot to take care of as land use planners, but we must practice good land use that preserves what matters the most to our city while dealing with a lot of the uncertainty that comes up in these discussions. Good land use is important because it improves our city, increasing both our immediate and our long-term livability and sustainability for all of us who are here. It makes land, it makes Mountain View a place where people want to live, work, and play, providing housing of all types, supporting thriving small and large businesses, and maintaining rich cultural and recreational activities, and a sense of a community that matters so much. Good land use planning also creates efficiency for future staff and council, who will build off the work that we create today, rather than having them have to scramble and do the work we could have done now. And of course, it leaves a legacy, so we know that we created the best Mountain View possible for those who come after us. Good land use inherently creates balance between both the natural environment and the built environment today, but also really envisions and thinks about, and thinks boldly about, the future. It thoughtfully takes into account and balances all stakeholder needs, which is never easy. Good land use is also holistic, covering way more than the built environment, and looking at the bigger picture, like transportation, infrastructure improvements, community impacts, sustainability, green space, placemaking, and the human element that sometimes we leave out. All of these things are very important to look at while considering the goals that we still have and the values of our general plan.
Thank you. Tina, on to you. How does good land use improve our city? And what is good land use? You have two minutes.
I like this question a lot as well, because I know how important, you know, land use and zoning can be. You know, as an engineer, I work on capital projects that take, you know, a long time to plan, a long time to design, a long time to build, but can also last for decades as well. And so careful, you know, work of the EPC council and city planners, working all in together, I know would be very important, not just for, you know, me and my family, but, you know, for my daughter. Growing up here, I think it's important for families to, you know, be able to benefit in the future years based on decisions made now. So what is good land use? I think it's a lot of different things. It's a balancing act, right? So we want to increase density where it makes sense, because there are, you know, regulatory requirements and other motivations, housing is so expensive. But we want to do it in a responsible way. We want to make sure that we consider, you know, parking, transit, and environmental impacts. We want to make sure we have good green spaces. We basically just want to make sure that the folks who live here have their needs met now, but also their needs met in the future. And it's so hard, because we don't know exactly what the future is going to bring. We had COVID, that was very different from anything we've had in our lifetime, but really changed how people interact with the community and, you know, the places, streets, parks around them. And so it's very difficult. But I think that's why I'm drawn to this, because I'm committed to be here, have a family here, and I want to bring my experience in other municipalities and my experience working as an engineer to be able to work on land use issues here.
Great, thank you. All right, final question, and we'll go back to you, Tina. What is the role of a planning commissioner? And that's for one minute.
I also like this question a lot. And I've thought about it a lot, because I've had the opportunity to talk to existing planning commissioners and others as well. I think the planning commissioners obviously work at the pleasure of council, but they also try to, you know, kind of suss out details about staff reports, read through the, you know, the recommendations, understand what the implications are, the recommendations of are, and work with staff. And I feel like that's something I would love to do. I have been in the situation of writing staff reports myself, giving, you know, presentations to boards and councils. And so I feel like I have a unique skill set to bring here, and I would just like to nerd out, you know, with the staff members on the reports they put together. So I feel like it would be super fun and a super fulfilling activity for me to be a commissioner.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to Ida Rose, final question for one minute. What is the role of a planning commissioner?
It's really funny. This question really does speak to the planning nerd in me, too. In my undergrad years, my minor was in city and regional planning, and because I love the built environment and how humans interact with it. Of course, the job of being an EPC commissioner is, it's on paper, you know, to look at the general plan, evaluate projects, look at plans, right? It's very cut and dry. But in reality, I think an EPC commissioner needs to know how to ask the great questions, to really dig into the nature of projects, to really make sure that stakeholders are being consulted and understood and included in projects. And for me, really, really important is to really ask the big, big questions, like if we're envisioning the Moffett Precise Plan, are we envisioning a bold, beautiful new space? Are we really pushing the envelope of creating passeos and public art in diverse housing types and a community that will really support a whole new way of looking at things? Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, well, I want to thank both of our applicants and invite them to sit in the audience if they like. The question portion is over, so we'll bring the, no, wow. Thank you for that. But I'm going to bring the matter back to council for discussion and a recommendation to the council for one seat, term running from February 25, 2025, through December 31, 2025, open on the Environmental Planning Commission. Per the selection process outlined in Council Policy Number K-2, when voting, each council member shall vote for as many candidates as there are open seats. If there is a tie vote, we will re-vote on the tied applicant, and the applicant with the highest number of votes wins. This process can be changed upon a majority vote of the council. We can now discuss our recommendations for one member of the Environmental Planning Commission or proceed directly to a vote by ballot. I'll turn to my colleagues if they'd like to have any type of discussion before we vote. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yeah, well, this is a very hard decision, because we are faced with two excellent candidates. And I really enjoyed hearing your answers and talking to you before this. And you would both do a fabulous job on this, although you're, you know, very different personalities, you would both do a fabulous job. I am, I was particularly impressed by your, both of your answers about the role of a planning commissioner. You know, I served on EPC for nine years, so I gave this a lot of thought, and I'm sure many of my colleagues who were on EPC gave this a lot of thought, too. But I remember thinking that, you know, fundamentally, the role of the planning commission is to serve as the expert residents on how the city should be put together, how the land use should be. We have staff that provides technical expertise, and we, and planning commissioners need to dig into that, understand what it is, but also provide that perspective of members. And with that in mind, I am going to recommend that we appoint this time Ida Rose Sylvester, because I think she has been a very active part of our community for the last decade or so, at least from my experience, personal experience. And all of the appointments she's had, she's, she's really taken very seriously and done a good job of. So it's too bad we don't have two or three spots, spots is actually my feeling. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. It really is kind of a pity that, like, we have such, well, it's not really a pity that we have good candidates. That's, that's like a problem that everyone kind of wishes they have. And I, last time we had, well, not the last time we had appointments, but the time before that, I was struggling with essentially candidates that were very apples and oranges, where this was the, whether I was going to vote for Celia or, why can't I remember? Paul, Paul Donahue. And like, what they brought were very different, but I liked both of it. And I get that same kind of, ah, lack of veteran vibe here. Ida Rose has served our community for a very long time, and I think that is a very admirable trait. And because she had the HRC, she had the Environmental Task Force, Sustainable Task Force. And it was, and it was a good thing for, for people to get involved in those things, and I think she did a good job on them. Tina has that staffing experience. We have, we, some of us may have strong disagreements with, with how staff does things, and I think she provides like a really nice bridge of that when we go to, when, when we, what we're looking for in an EPC member, because essentially, EPC kicks the tires of the staff report, so to say. They're the ones that make sure, like, hey, we don't have to ask those questions, because those questions were answered already. And I think she'll actually do a very good job on that. And it was quite refreshing talking to her. I made a joke that was like, oh, you're, you're pretty much one of the normies, not the, the people who sit in that back of the council chambers and, and make fun comments. But I have, so I'm going to have a hard time with my vote. I actually think both of them are very good assets to our city, and I hope that despite what comes out of this vote, we'll still have you in whatever capacity there are.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you. So just sharing a perspective of just having come from EPC, and I think this is the, this is filling my vacancy through the end of the year, and then we'll have an opportunity to determine whether or not to reappoint this, this person tonight to a, to a full I think both candidates are great. I would like to see both of them on EPC. And so really, what it comes down to for me is a, is a matter of what makes sense to do at the right time. And so I think the considerations, and I'm eager to hear from other colleagues if they have thoughts, but I think some of the considerations that come to mind, just having served recently on EPC, are, you know, what is the makeup of the current commission? What would, what do these two candidates both bring to sort of add, you know, a, a new voice to, to the commission? And so I, and, and also a full term, for example, Ida Rose is very experienced in the community. I'd be very comfortable appointing her to either this or, or even a longer term toward the end of the year, because what will happen at the end of the year is we'll be able to reappoint or consider reappointment of this person, plus I think one other person is terming out. And so we'll have another opportunity. I also remember watching the prior council meeting in the fall with the interviews, and I think we had strong candidates then, and I think some, some folks encouraged the folks who didn't make it to reapply and come back. So I think that's what's going through my head, is a way to kind of figure out how to make, make all this work. I think, I think both would be great additions to EPC. But I think the context that I'm, I'm thinking about is, you know, the current makeup of the EPC, how to add some additional diversity, if we can, to EPC in terms of voices from different backgrounds, different, different areas of the city. And so, yeah, it'll, it'll be a tough decision, but I hope regardless of whatever decision we make tonight, I'm, I'm comforted that we'll, it sounds like we'll have another opportunity a little later in the year. I think the other thing that we always try and think about is, if we're appointing someone from another body, then we have that vacancy. And I think in this case, it isn't as, as pertinent, because I think we have a full HRC, but, you know, we create other vacancies that we have to fill. Those are just all the things that I think we have to keep in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah, this is, this whole format is very formal, the timeline, so I'm still trying to constrain myself here. So the reason I asked the question is, what is, what is the role of a planning commissioner? And I've always asked that. And sometimes, these two candidates were able to answer, but sometimes they don't even know what the people are talking about. But I see the role as a commissioner as one who interprets the, the general plan, the precise plans, and makes sure that it is in compliance when it comes to the council. So it's more, I see it more of as a technical position versus a position where they're, you know, here's their thoughts of where we're going, because that's council's job and what the staff does. So I appreciate people that are technically sound and able to interpret and apply the proper criteria that are presented to them and, and respond to the project in that sense, so that when it comes to us, we don't need to worry about that, has it been thoroughly looked at? And then we can take the broader picture and see how we can interpret it throughout the, the city. So that's my thoughts on why I asked the question. You both did a good job of answering that question, but that's what I look for in a planning commissioner.
Councilmember Hicks.
So I hit the request to speak button before Councilmember Clark spoke, and I was planning to say something very similar to what he said, so I'll just keep it super short. I guess in the, I've been on council for six years now, and in, in those six years, doing a number of EPC interviews, I don't, I think we've rarely had as, as good candidates as we have this time, and, and the, the immediate previous time when Tina, you were here as well. So it's, it's really difficult. I would really, as many members of the council have said, and I'd really and I'd really like to vote for both of you. And we will have, I did, reading the applications and knowing that you are both going to be good applicants, I did look over the schedule, and we will have the ability to add somebody again at the end of the year. So I hope that whoever does not make it applies again at the end of the year.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
All right. Okay, so I think the voting process will be to fill out the applicant sheet, and then we will pass it down to the deputy city clerk and the assistant city clerk. They will tally the vote. And then that will just take a moment. I want to, before we, well, before I vote, I just want to thank both of the applicants for presenting themselves tonight for us, for our consideration. I also served on the Environmental Planning Commission. And I, so I'm used to the old format, but this is the new format as well. And I think any opportunity for residents to come and put themselves forward to serve the city in a volunteer capacity is something that I am very grateful for. And I wanted to share that I do see this as an opportunity for one person tonight, but also in December, when we'll be appointing again. I also want to share, when I'm thinking about a commission, I'm thinking about the commission as a whole and the different components. So the different geographical regions of the city where an applicant live, the different lived experiences, the different work experiences that they're bringing to the table. And for myself, given the current makeup, we have two individuals who do represent the Varsity Park area or that kind of region. And so I'll share, my vote is going to be for Tina Pham. We, in the time that I've, the six-plus years I've been on council, I haven't seen an applicant from the San Antonio neighborhood, I don't recall. And I know it's a very active community, going through a lot of the changes that we're discussing. And I think that that's going to be a perspective that's really important as we're talking about implementing. One of the questions was about the housing element and the different components. So that's one of the things that's top of mind for me. And I will turn it over to our colleagues to, we're going to do a vote. Okay. Councilmember Clark has selected Tina Pham. Councilmember Hicks has selected Ida Rose Sylvester. Councilmember McAllister has selected Tina Pham. Councilmember Shaw, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ramirez has selected Tina Pham. Councilmember Shaw Walter has selected Ida Rose Sylvester. Vice Mayor Ramos has selected Tina Pham. And Mayor Kamay has selected Tina Pham for a majority of five to two.
Thank you, Assistant City Clerk. This means that at our February 25 meeting, Tina Pham will be on the agenda to fill the vacancy for the Environmental Planning Commission. Thank you to both of our applicants and congratulations to Tina. I think this moves us on to item five, which is our adjournment. The next city council meeting will be held on February 25, 2025. The meeting is adjourned at 7:17.